It is at six thirty. In Mayor Guerrero's absence, my Deputy Mayor Stremer called this meeting to order. This is the seventeenth City Council meeting held via an online conferencing application. All City Council members and staff are participating from remote locations, and the meeting will continue as long as there is a quorum. Please allow one person to speak at a time. I would give each member an opportunity to ask questions or make comments. Uh, City Clerk, please start the roll call.
Deputy Mayor Stremler?
Present.
Counselor Farmer?
Here.
Counselor Henry?
Yep.
Counselor Estucci?
Here.
Counselor Hicks?
Here.
Counselor Burisma?
Here.
City Manager Casey?
Here.
City Clerk Renteria, I am here. Finance Director Alba?
Excused.
Fire Chief Anderson?
Fire Chief may join the meeting in progress. Uh, the department is heading to deal with a emergency call.
Okay, Police Chief Escalera?
I'm here.
Public Works Director Fisher? I see he's here. We can come back to him later. Okay, Deputy Mayor?
Yes. Um, Mayor Guerrero was out of town and has requested an excused absence. Is there any objection by the Council to giving Mr. Guerrero, Mayor Guerrero, an excused absence? Hearing no objection, Mayor Guerrero has been excused from tonight's workshop meeting. First item on the agenda, we have the third quarter budget report. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor and members of council. Uh, in the Finance Director's absence, uh, medical leave, I'm going to deliver this presentation. She did most of the work in getting it ready. I also will be calling out to, uh, the Public Works Director Shane Fisher, uh, once we get through the general fund portion of the presentation, uh, for his assistance on some, uh, questions that may come up, uh, or any questions that come up on the, uh, special funds like water, sewer, and, uh, stormwater. We'll go to... Let's see, we'll start the PowerPoint presentation, please. Uh, go ahead and keep scrolling to the PowerPoint on the, uh, budget update. And Jackie, are you seeing that, or? There we go.
I apologize, it wasn't showing me to share this screen. Let me get this on. Can you see the slide, the slideshow now?
I can, can, looks like everybody should be able to see that. All right, and Clerk Renteria, are you going to be able to drive, or do, or is it set up for me to drive?
I think I have to drive for you.
All right, if you could go to the next slide, please. All right, so for council's awareness, this is the third quarter, uh, budget update on your 2020 budget revenues and expenditures year-to-date. This is through September thirtieth. We'll cover the general fund to begin with, and then move through, um, all other funds. And, uh, Finance Director wanted to remind council, this actually does include the Budget Amendment Number Three that you adopted at the end of, uh, or beginning of last week. Excuse me. Okay, sorry, that was a text from the Fire Chief. Um, uh, this includes your Budget Amendment Number Three, which was for the purchase, uh, to arrange for the purchase of the, uh, fire truck out of Oregon. And so that is included in the, uh, adopted budget figures that you'll be seeing this evening. Let's go to the next slide. All right. So I'll start with the general fund. And for purposes of comparison, and since we are three-quarters of the way through the calendar year and through the budget year, uh, as a rough estimate of how we're doing, it can be useful to think of it in terms of we're seventy-five percent of the way through the budget. Obviously, some revenues and some expenditures don't simply walk along a, uh, steady, uh, monthly level. Uh, we have cyclical and seasonal expenses and revenues. Um, so it's not a perfectly precise approximation of it, but it is a good benchmark for us to be able to kind of evaluate how we're doing year-to-date. I'll start with the broad category of taxes. We are budgeted to get just over nine million in tax revenue this year, and right now, at three-quarters of the way through the year, we are at seventy-five point one percent. I do want to call council's attention to a couple of interesting details in that. Earlier this year, council's aware that one of the areas of significant concern for our city and many others was what was going on with retail sales tax. As the COVID-19 pandemic struck and many businesses were forced to close and shut down operations, and many services were, uh, required to cease operations, the, uh, impact on retail sales tax was initially quite significant. And in earlier, uh, forecasts, we were looking at drops of three to five percent or more, uh, in each month as we were going through. However, I am pleased to report that, uh, some offsetting trends have worked in our favor. The city has received, uh, a little higher-than-usual destination sales tax. So these are taxes associated with online ordering and delivery of, of goods right here to Sunnyside. And at this point, we have regained, uh, that sales tax revenue, when we are currently clocking in at eighty-two point three percent of budgeted sales tax revenue. So sales tax seems to be coming back pretty strong. Very excited to see that, and we hope that is sustained. But that's a real high point in the overall, um, uh, tax picture. Property taxes is our second-largest, uh, or second or third-largest overall, uh, source of tax revenue. That is fairly steady. This is one that I'll mention is very cyclical-dependent. Property taxes are generally due in two payments, one in the spring, one in the fall. That's coming up later this month. Some residents and property owners do pay their property taxes all at once in the spring, but generally, uh, it's an, you know, it's an often-used option to do it in two payments, spring and fall. So right now, we're just a little below sixty percent of our annual sales tax revenue, excuse me, property tax revenue collected, which is actually, again, pretty good. It's above the midway point, and, uh, where we'd like to see that for this point in the year, pending the final, um, fall payments that are coming in soon. Another area I'll just mention, uh, most other taxes are about on target or slightly ahead. One area that we are seeing reduced tax revenue is from gambling taxes, card games. Those establishments are not being allowed to reopen until we hit Phase Four under the, uh, COVID-19, uh, Safe Start or Smart Start Washington reopening plan. So, uh, to the extent that, uh, those businesses are, uh, not yet open and operating, we are seeing quite a bit lower, um, gambling tax revenue. However, as a total amount out of that total nine-million-dollar budget, we typically only see about thirty-five thousand dollars in gambling tax revenue a year. So for that to be low has an impact, but not a significant one. Next, I'll speak about, um, licenses and permits. Here again, we are seeing fairly strong, uh, activity. Some of that is associated with a couple of very large construction project permits that, uh, were, uh, got underway at the beginning of the year. Probably most notably is the high school, uh, construction. But that helped a bit, uh, in, in that area. So building and structure permits are coming in already at almost ninety percent of budget, despite the slowdown in other construction and other activity. We are seeing a lot of, uh, re-roofing and, and other small permits coming in over the course of the summer. And so permitting team has been processing anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-five, uh, permits a month, uh, for some of these smaller projects. So there's, there's a fair amount of activity there, and that's encouraging. In intergovernmental, we're at about sixty-seven percent. And part of the reason for that is, the council will recall of that nine-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand-dollar budgeted, uh, intergovernmental line item. Five-hundred-and-twelve-thousand of that is the first wave of the CARES grant, uh, funding, uh, which was booked as revenue, uh, late, uh, and I believe the second-quarter budget amendment. And so we are still applying for reimbursement, uh, under that, uh, under that program. And, uh, we still have about, uh, two-hundred-thousand, uh, that we're, uh, going to be trying to seek reimbursement for during the course of the year. So overall, intergovernmental is on track. And Jackie, with that, I'll go to the next slide. Charges for goods and services. So these are for, oh gosh, a whole host of different activities from the city. Court services, legal services, police security, uh, school resource officers, funeral escorts, a, a whole range of things. Many of these have been affected by the pandemic reductions in services and activities. Um, and so we are, uh, definitely seeing a shallowing in, uh, in this area. However, I'll note that, uh, one-point-seven million, this is, uh, significantly smaller slice of the revenue pie than, uh, the taxes and the, uh, items that we talked about on the previous slide. Fines and penalties likewise are seeing, uh, a bit of an effect from, uh, the pandemic and not getting, you know, for some, uh, some of it has been that some activity has, has, uh, there's been a little bit, there was a little bit of a reduction in traffic and, and some of those things. So we've seen, uh, s- smaller revenues in some of those, uh, fines and penalties. And, and it's kind of nice that, you know, hopefully folks aren't, uh, incurring as many traffic infractions. They're driving better, um, or less. Interest and other revenues, those are coming in right about on target. We'll go to the, uh, next slide. And... Oh, I think I missed, there was a little, uh, uh, symbol that Elizabeth had added in an animation on the previous slide, sorry about that. Overall, general fund revenues year-to-date are at seventy-three point two percent. So, uh, just lightly below the seventy-five percent target, but as you'll see, um, we are also doing a very good job on keeping control of expenditure side. So, uh, overall, we end up, uh, on the, on the plus side of things. Let's go ahead and go on to the next slide. So this is a little bit different view of the same information we just covered, but this breaks down the relative, the different sources of revenue by the size, uh, and magnitude of their contribution to our overall revenues. At this point, year-to-date, you'll see that retail sales and use tax, it not only has been coming in strong, but as a result, it's a slightly larger share of our pie than we sometimes see. It's usually about a quarter of our revenue, and right now, it's almost, almost twenty-eight percent of it. City utility taxes, uh, and, uh, private utility taxes are also, uh, coming in pretty strong and on target for the year. Uh, they are, uh, that, those three, along with our property and pilot taxes, are, are kind of the, the, the four main legs of the stool that support city activities in the general fund. Intergovernmental revenues, you'll see is a little bit larger slice of the pie than, uh, we've seen in some past years. And again, that's due to CARES grant reimbursement, uh, funding. Charges for services at the jail are, uh, next. And I'll mention that those include things like, um, uh, commissary services, things that, uh, we recover revenue from, from the inmates and so forth for, uh, jail operations. So those are, those have consistently been a pretty good source of revenue for us. And then you'll see the other smaller items arranged around the slices at the top. But, um, this gives you a sense of, of where we are in overall revenue and how each one makes up an important part of the overall revenue picture. With that, now that we've talked about what money is coming in, we'll shift gears and talk about what money is coming out. And I'll acknowledge upfront, you'll see a typo on the tops of these slides. These are from, uh, these were carried forward from the presentation we did in June. So these, we have confirmed all of the figures that you'll see here. The dollar figures and the percentage figures are correct for September, seventy-five percent of the budget, but the heading at the top just, uh, uh, is still, uh, holdover from the, from the June present, from the July presentation. So the, the figures down below, though, for each, uh, area of activity, those are correct. So we'll start with general fund expenditures, uh, in the legislative arena. This is for council, and council is running a little bit above budget. In looking at the breakdown of that, some of that has to do with some of the, uh, have, charges to office and operating supplies. Some of this is probably, um, uh, COVID-related. We had, uh, made some purchases, uh, at the beginning of the pandemic to try to make sure we were keeping up with, uh, sanitizing and so forth. But overall, uh, other activities in this area are all well within, um, projected amount. And so we're, uh, pretty good on that one. The court is coming in just slightly below, uh, the expenditure plan. Most planned expenses, uh, we've, we've been remarkably able to keep a level of court operations going even through the pandemic. There was a brief period of kind of complete shutdown during the, uh, late March, early April period, but, um, we were able to resume some activity. And so we've been able to keep pretty well on track with that. Executive service, this, this is the, um, uh, well, this is basically me. And I'm coming in a little under budget there at about seventy percent. And, uh, just looking at things like communication, travel, things like that, that, uh, we aren't spending as much on, on travel, of course, this year. So, um, just trying to manage within our means there. Finance is just a little above budget, but not, not significantly. And the main areas, again, there where, um, it's coming a little above is our office and operating, uh, supplies, as well as, um, uh, I think we've already gotten our billing for IT services for this month into these figures. So we're running a little above there. And again, in terms of the, the dollar amounts we're talking about, uh, both for legislative and for finance is, you know, a few hundred or a few thousand, a couple, about a thousand dollars over what was originally budgeted under that line item. Not a significant increase, uh, over what was planned. But overall, it's, it's about on track. Clerk's office, our Clerk Renteria is, uh, keeping, uh, right on budget in her area. And then finally, legal services, this is the city attorney, as well as, um, uh, our public defense services, uh, and they also are coming in well under budget for this point this year. We'll go on to next slide, thank you. Left one, we have a small group of individuals under the law enforcement officers and, law enforcement officer and firefighters, I think, left one retirement plan. This is, uh, to pay for medical expenses for, uh, few remaining retirees in, in this category, and it's right on track for the year. Our personnel services, human resources, also coming in under budget. Central services, this is... Try to get to central services. Working off the budget position here. Centralized services, uh, wages and benefits are right on track. Some minor, uh, expenses higher than planned in, uh, some fuel and travel and, uh, not travel, excuse me. That's about it. So a little high there, and I'll, I may, uh, follow up with Elizabeth when she's, uh, available to just double-check what's, what might be going on there. Law enforcement, this is, you can see, and, well, and central services is all of less than forty thousand dollars. Coming in at over four million dollars is law enforcement, uh, four-point-two million. And here again, the police department has been doing a great job in trying to keep tight control of its expenses this year. It's coming in at less than sixty-eight percent of the original budgeted amount. Again, keeping in mind, we might normally expect to be at about seventy-five percent at this point. Salaries and benefits in law enforcement administration and in, uh, investigation are all coming in under budget. We've had, uh, even with, um, in some of those categories in overtime, despite the, uh, overtime that was incurred during May, when we had our COVID-19 outbreak at the Law and Justice Center that affected nearly a quarter of the police department. They've managed to keep real good control over the course of the rest of the year. And at this point, um, overtime is back at about, uh, this sixty-seven, sixty-eight percent mark. So well under control for the year-to-date. Next, I'll go to the fire department, about one million dollars. They, Chief Anderson and his group are, again, doing a really good job of kind of staying within, uh, planned budget. Not too much, uh, specific there to go into detail on, but just know that they're, you know, that they're on track. Uh, same thing with building and code enforcement activities. And we'll keep going, Jackie. Let's see here. I'll probably defer to Elizabeth unless Shane wants to jump in on other non-expenditures. I'm a little rusty on that one. But I'll go on to note that airport is coming in under budget. Planning and community development are coming in under budget. Jail services, this, this is coming in, uh, under budget, and not surprisingly, because we've been holding fewer inmates, um, we've been able to, um, you know, save resources. We're not having to spend as much on inmate meals, on medications, things, uh, uniform, uh, the, the, their, uh, inmate uniforms. So, you know, they've been, uh, really watching the bottom line there. And with fewer inmates, we've been wanting to make sure to try to keep the jail, uh, expenses in line, and they've been doing a great job of that. Parks and Recreation, this is about a half-a-million-dollar budget. That's coming in a little high. Some of that is cyclical. We bring on seasonal labor in the summer, uh, to assist with parks maintenance. And so we normally do run a little ahead before we hit the fall, so that's right on track for them. Dispatch Services is another area that's, uh, a little higher than usual. And looking at the, um, main difference, uh, the main factor there, uh, at least in dispatch, does seem to be overtime. Overtime is running higher there, and in addition to the outbreak that we had in May that affected dispatch also, um, we had a second outbreak in, involving a couple of dispatchers, I want to say, uh, in August. And so we are seeing higher-than-usual overtime among the, uh, communication dispatchers. All right, so this is a different look again at, uh, the detailed information that we've just been reviewing. This is the overall, uh, expenditures for the 2020 budget, year-to-date, three-quarters of the way through the year. You'll see that, um, we have spent about seven-point-nine million overall in total expenditures. The largest slice of that is in our public safety arena, uh, about thirty-six percent for the police, uh, department administration, patrol, those functions. About ten percent for jail services, and then if we come around also to, uh, dispatch services, about five and a half, almost five-point-six percent, uh, in dispatch services. Transfers out, uh, that is a fairly large slice, and that represents, among other things, the general fund subsidizes the Streets, uh, program. Uh, and there's a transfer out from the general fund to Streets, um, about seven-hundred-thousand over the course of, of the entire year. So that's, you'll see that there as an expenditure. Most other items are pretty much in track. And I'll just note, uh, remind for council's benefit, this seven-point-nine million in expenditures, that compares to eight-point-seven million, and a little bit over eight-point-seven-four million in revenues year-to-date. So our expenditures year-to-date are running just over half a million less than our, um, excuse me, eight-point-seven, seven-point-nine, excuse me, about three-quarters of a million less than our, uh, uh, revenue. So our expenditures and revenue pictures are right where we want them to be. We'll go on to the next. So here's Elizabeth kind of summarized that same point for you. Target through the end of September, we'd like to be at about seventy-five percent. We're just a little shy of that on the revenue side, but staff across city programs, uh, and, and the leadership of the, the departments have all been really focusing on keeping our expenditures tight. And so, um, so far, year-to-date, we are coming in well under, and that positions us, uh, you know, we kind of emphasize, every dollar we're saving this year provides us a cushion for, uh, revenue uncertainty in the future. And so really appreciate the, the, the confirmation that, that folks are really, uh, adhering to that. Okay, so now we'll get into the arena that, uh, Shane's, some of this Shane's a little more familiar with. These are our capital project funds. You may recall, I think it was last year, for the first time, under Director Alba's initiative, we started setting up and making sure that we were accounting for planned capital projects in separate funds. And so you'll see here that we booked the revenue for them, and depending on the, the timing, uh, we would book the expenditures. In the general fund, there, uh, we're right on track with the plan. Eighty-one percent of the revenues received and about eighty-two percent expended. In the Street Fund, uh, revenues, there's a, another payment, a transfer in that I think I mentioned earlier, um, that'll be coming in. Expenditures, those tend to hit a little later this year. And, uh, when we get to talking about the Street Fund more generally, I think Shane can address that a little better. Fire Equipment Reserve, uh, we have the revenues now in that. And when the payment clears for the fire engine, uh, you'll see an expenditure side on this one as well when that gets booked, but that, uh, that's what that'll help with. Same thing with water and sewer. There are various projects that were planned and booked out of the capital project, uh, activities, and, and those are going forward. Ambulance EMS Capital Fund, there, I'll have to, I'll follow up with, uh, Elizabeth on that one or with Ken when they're available, um, to double-check why that one's still so low. I don't, I don't have the detail on that at the moment. Go on to the next, so Street Fund. I'll just cover the highlights. Revenues are coming in a little shallow, uh, and we'll talk about that some more when we get to the revenue forecast for 2021. But, uh, just to kind of, uh, signal that, as I mentioned, uh, travel activity, vehicle travel activity, uh, saw a definite decrease during the pandemic. Not as severe as in some other parts of the state, but still noticeable. Our gas tax revenues year-to-date are down about fifteen, almost seventeen percent. So we're seeing a little less revenue coming into the Street Fund this year. We see that reflected here. Street Fund has always also depended on a transfer in from the general fund to make up its full budget. So that's how you see that kind of playing out. Streets, uh, has been, again, watching their expenditures carefully. There's a fair amount of, uh, of activity that's associated with our winter storm activity. So we do normally see, uh, a fair chunk of, uh, expenditures in the final quarter. So with that, I'll, I don't know, Shane, if there's anything you'd want to add to that? Did we figure out if he's unmuted or?
He's here. I have him as unmuted, but I think he needs to do it on his phone.
Okay, we'll move on. Okay, let's go ahead and move on. The special revenue funds, these are all fairly small. We have a modest contingency fund that is currently fully funded and nothing is budgeted to be expended from it. The investigative fund is one of our public safety funds. This is a special dedicated fund. And the revenues for that have come in strong and police department has not had to, has not expended much out of that yet. Crime Prevention Fund is another public safety fund. Again, the revenues have come in well on schedule and expenditures are under budget. Same thing with the public safety tax. Tourism, the tourism fund is at about 80% of revenues at this point. And expenditures, because so many of the events had to be canceled this year, those obviously are quite a bit lower. So that helps us a little bit with the, making sure that we have a stable fund balance as we go into next year. Other funds, next slide, please. So very, not much activity here. The government obligation bonds, this is something usually that Elizabeth is most familiar with, but revenues are coming in ahead of expenditures. Our community development block rent revenues, again, very modest amount. But coming in, revenues coming in ahead of expenditures. Real estate excise tax, REIT, is a restricted fund. It can only be used on capital projects listed in our comprehensive plan. And since we are in the process of updating the comprehensive plan and putting together a new capital facilities plan, at this point, there's very little, not much activity under that. But the revenues are coming in strong. There's been a surprising amount of real estate sales transactions. And so they're coming in above projections. And we're doing in pretty good shape on both REIT 1 and REIT 2. Go on to Water Fund. The Water Fund, same basic story. All revenues are coming in about where they need to be or ahead. Water is in good position. Expenditures are coming in very good in the, in the main operating fund. If we've managed to get Shane on, I might ask him to kind of explain a little bit about the reserve, but why that looks that way. We may have to have him log in differently or try just phoning in. All right, I'm going to move on. Certainly if council has any questions about any of these matters that I haven't been able to cover precisely, we'll be happy to follow up after the meeting and get those answers to you. Let's move on to Sewer. Here again, the main sewer fund, operating fund, revenues are coming in very strong and expenditures are well under control. Same kind of pictures we saw with the reserves as far as revenues and expenditures. So go on to the other enterprise funds. These are the garbage, the ambulance, garbage utility, ambulance utility and stormwater. Revenues and expenditures in garbage are running a little higher than budgeted. Revenues fortunately are outpacing expenditures. And I will double check to make sure that that doesn't also include October's payment in that already. So this is the all funds summary. 75% of the way through the year, overall revenues for the city are coming in at 79.3%. But our overall fund expenditures are coming in at only 61.5%. We are really trying to watch those bottom lines and monitor our spending so that, you know, we're really focusing on, on essential spending and weathering the challenges that the pandemic is providing us. So with that, that's the end of the presentation. And be happy to open it up for questions that I can take back to Shane or Elizabeth when, when they're available.
Okay, thank you, Mr. City Manager. I will now call on each council member by name to see if they have any questions or comments. Let's start with Councilor Burisma.
Thank you, sir. I do have a question. I know that we have been stopped from turning off water due to lack of payment, that sort of thing. Do we have a lot of outstanding city water bills?
So my understanding is that historically, the city has carried anywhere from 75 to 100 outstanding or overdue utility bills each month and has used the program in the past to cut off water after, you know, prescribed period of time is set forth in the code. That has not dramatically changed since the pandemic. We're still carrying about 100, as I understand it. And I'll get a more precise figure for you for council in weekly update on that. But we check in each month with the finance supervisor with Deloitte of Signs and with Mary Ramirez, our utility billing clerk who oversees that. And they keep track of that. And they've seen a slight increase, but not significant, not, not, not a doubling or a tripling like you might imagine could be possible. We're mindful of the fact that some other communities are starting to report increased incidents of this. So we're watching for that. But so far, folks have been able to, by and large, keep up.
Thank you. Do we have a plan then for those who are way behind? Let's say somebody is renting a house and they move out of that house. Do we have a plan to follow up and get the funds from them? Or are we still working on that?
So under the orders, various executive orders out of Governor's Office and through Commerce, there is a prescribed program that cities put in place for working with property owners on repayment plans. And our finance department has adopted and is executing on that as, as folks are requesting assistance.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Burisma?
No, sir, I do not.
Thank you. Councilor Farmer?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilor Hicks?
No questions at this time.
Thank you. Councilor Henry?
No questions or comments at this time, sir.
Thank you. Councilor Resusi?
No questions or comments, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I have no questions or comments either. We'll move on to our next item. Budget ranking. We now have our second active agenda. This is the 2021 budget ranking. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I want to thank council members for the feedback that you've been providing over the last few weeks on the list of potential budget enhancement requests. The city clerk is just calling that up for you. We just got all of the final ones in from you today. And as soon as we've got that up on screen, I'll be going over this with you. The council will remember back at our budget workshop, we recognized that in addition to kind of the general goal of trying to craft a budget for 2021 that managed through the COVID-19 pandemic impacts, but still adhered to council's goals that we tried to avoid having to, you know, raise taxes or fees again on the residents of the city, that we try to avoid any layoffs or reductions to core services. And that we continue on the program for a you know, increasing ending fund balance reserve and all of that bringing the budget in on balance. And we knew with that, that especially this year with the revenue picture so uncertain, that room for additional spending or increased spending on new things was likely to be limited. Nevertheless, we wanted to get a sense of where council's priorities were with some of the requests that had been submitted in the past and some new ones that were submitted for this year. And so with your input, we tallied the items that you all ranked either as among your top five or three to five highest priorities and those that you might characterize as your lowest priorities. Not surprisingly, with nearly 30 items on the list, it's pretty spread out, but there were some areas of consensus. There's also frankly, some areas where you're divided. Where some of you indicated that an item was a priority and others a high priority and others saw it as a low priority. So what we've done here is ranked them based off of the number of times that one of you selected it as your top or lowest priority. If the, there were two selections, somebody in their highest and somebody in their lowest, essentially that became kind of a neutral recommendation. There were a few items that no one had either on their highest or lowest list. And we'll just kind of go through and I'll give you a sense of that. But this will be useful to us as we start putting together your first budget proposal for delivery by the end of this month in seeking opportunities within that budget structure that I just described. As many of these, these priorities that you've identified, that we can fit into that and fund for you, we're definitely going to work to do that. And then as we get into the budget hearings, that'll give you an opportunity to, in November, to refine and adjust and work with that even more closely. So number one on the list or number one, the first two on the list, both with four council members indicating these are a highest priority among their top five would be to replace the city council's tablet devices with more contemporary technology. In light of the world we live in now with COVID-19 and pandemic restrictions, this has certainly increased urgency. I will share with council that I have authorized the finance director and IT to begin looking at whether we can even do this within the 2020 budget. Just because of that urgency and sensitivity and potentially we might be able to have, this might be an expenditure that would qualify for reimbursement under our COVID cares grant. And if that's the case, then we definitely want to try to deliver that one for you this year if possible. Second was kind of a consensus around if our funding allows to go ahead and proceed with creating a new fire, career firefighter EMS position in the fire department. So we'll definitely be taking a look at that. Security cameras for the city hall and Veterans Plaza, I had three, as did taking steps towards creating and funding. We have equipment rental and replacement funds on the chart of accounts, but they've not been fully funded for quite some time. And so taking steps towards moving ahead with that, very strong support for that. We'll scroll down a little further. All right. Also, there were two selections for police vehicles, seeing if we can't lease to renew some or, some of our police vehicles. So we'll, we'll be trying to take a look at that. And I hadn't planned, we just got this finalized today. So I hadn't planned to try to go through all of it with you tonight, but wanted to at least show you some of the areas where there, there was strong interest in moving ahead. But we'll get this out to all of you because you know, sometimes there may be opportunities that come up as we saw, for example, looking on the third item down, there was a checkmark by the fire engine replacement. When we first put this list together, we had not yet learned of the opportunity that existed in Oregon for us to acquire a new fire engine EMS vehicle combination. That came together very quickly. Very pleased that we were able to bring that forward and move that ahead with your support. So that's something that's on the list, had support, but last year, you know, before, before we had, when we started collecting your responses on this, that hadn't yet been done. So we'll, we'll continue to look for opportunities on some of these as as funding or as as they arrive. From here on down, we start getting into kind of the middle of the pack where there were some of you who saw a particular item as a high priority and others who saw it in some cases equally as a low priority, as something you didn't support. So these are kind of in the middle of the pack. There's definitely interest in them amongst council members. Several council members weighed in on them. But they, they, they speak to differences of prioritization and opinion. We'll keep going more like that. Kind of neutral. And then the part of the list we're seeing now is these are items where either you know, a slight or significant number of you selected that you did not prioritize one of these items. And I think the lowest on the list ended up being the idea now is not, it's, it's pretty clear now is not the time to try to be building a new city hall. And that kind of, you know, all other things being considered totally, totally makes sense. Appreciate that. But I did want to make sure to get this back to you once we got everything in today. And we'll be sending this out to you electronically with kind of the next wave of budget information. But very much appreciated council's participation and feedback on this. And this will help us as we try to come up with a good budget proposal for you at the end of this month. And that'll conclude my remarks.
Did you say you were finished, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We now have our, excuse me, I will now call on each council member to ask questions. Councilor Hicks?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilor Burisma?
No questions, sir.
Thank you. Councilor Henry?
Thank you for that presentation. I will have some questions a little later as the budget season goes on. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Resusi?
Thank you, sir. No, no questions, Mr. Deputy Mayor. But I did want to thank the staff for the work that they did on this. I think it's a great opportunity for council to, to kind of prioritize what it is that we want to, want to do as we're moving forward. So this is a great way to see it in, in front of us. And I appreciate the work that's been done on this. So thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
I have to apologize. Without thinking, I said Mr. Resusi, instead of Councilor Resusi. Please accept my apologies.
No, no apology necessary. No apology necessary, sir.
Thank you. Councilor Farmer?
No questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Are there any, anyone have anything to say before we go to the next item? Okay, hearing nothing.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, just this is an administrative item. I'm noticing, it looks like on Jackie's screen, there's someone who's entered the waiting room.
Somebody's what?
Has entered the waiting room. And I don't know.
It's Fire Chief Anderson.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Thank you. Apologies for the interruption.
Okay. Do you have anything that you want the fire chief to contribute to the item we just covered?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the 2120 budget revenue estimates. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And members of council, this just kind of continues the process of setting the stage for 2121, excuse me, 2021 budget development. Throughout this year, since the pandemic struck, we have been struggling along with our colleagues at the State Revenue Forecast Council with other cities and counties to try to give our best projections and analysis of what will happen to municipal revenues. give our best projections and and analysis of what will happen to municipal revenues. Council may recall that in the summer, the State Revenue and Case load Forecast Council projected a nearly nine billion dollar shortfall in the state operating budget over the next rest of this biennium and the next biennium. Now, just three months later, in September, they revised that and cut that shortfall in half to four point five billion. And I don't mean to minimize the impact of a four point five billion dollar shortfall in the state's operating budget, but it illustrates the volatility and uncertainty of the trends that we've been seeing as the economy has reacted so abruptly to so much change so quickly to go from a nine billion dollar shortfall to four point five billion in just three months. I mentioned earlier that areas that we had anticipated would be potentially weak for the city earlier this year, like retail sales tax have actually come back very strong. And so that has made it challenging for us to try to forecast for you how much revenue we really, how much new revenue we expect to get in 2021. So I'll walk through this worksheet, try not to take up too much of your time with it, but just want to give you a sense of where we think we're going to be and kind of give you the bottom line upfront. A few months ago, we thought we might be seeing a downturn as much as five to seven percent in overall revenues. That is not the picture we see today. The picture we're seeing today is a shortfall decline in revenue from what was budgeted for 2020 of only about one percent. Now, one percent isn't a severe decline, but it also comes at a time when we are seeing continued inflation. Inflation is running at about one and a half to two percent, depending on the economic category, construction costs, for example, are rising faster than some other types of expense. So it still represents a little bit of an erosion in our buying power for next year, but it frankly doesn't present a crisis for us. It's something that I'm pretty confident, given the, the tools and the steps that staff have been taking already and that, that, that we're trying to apply, that we can manage through with your support. So with that, I'll go into some detail on some of the specific revenue assumptions. First up is retail sales and use tax. As I mentioned, that is coming in a bit stronger. We're starting to see indications that it could come in two to three percent above of this year's projections, as I mentioned a while ago. And so we also are factoring in that next year, we'll see the addition of the two tenths of a percent of sales tax increase on top of that. So we're estimating an overall increase of about two point seven percent in retail sales tax in 2021 compared to what we started out for this year in 2020. And I'll make a note of that, again, just for council's awareness, as the year has progressed and we've gotten cares money and we've seen other adjustments that we've had to make, we decided to kind of stick with the original baseline of what in normal times we were expecting to get as revenue and not try to adjust this against that. So we're comparing the budgeted amount that we started with for 2020 with what we think we'll be getting in 2021. So retail sales and use tax, we think will go up a, a little bit next year. Property taxes, right now, we are seeing a fair amount of consistency, stability in property taxes. Each year, the city is allowed to adopt up to a one percent at the lorm. The city has consistently applied that. In addition, council's aware, we just approved some final plans where you've got other construction waiting in the wings. New construction that comes online in the coming year is revenue that gets added to that. And so right now, we're expecting about a seven percent overall increase in property taxes in 2021. It's not a huge change, but it's a positive. Utility taxes, we're assuming fairly stable, but maybe a little bit of a decline there just because of some uncertainty about utility payments and so forth. So pretty flat. Charges for jail services, as we showed you earlier in the budget for this year, charges for jail services are down because the jail population is down. We do expect to recover and have a little bit stronger jail program next year and be able to be in a position to accept more inmates. But we are still nevertheless projecting about a twenty-five percent reduction in jail revenue services for the jail compared to what we planned on for this year. Next areas, charges for these, you'll see just modest adjustments here and there, assuming a little bit of a contraction based on what we've been seeing in this part of the year. Again, the dollar amounts are fairly modest. These are much smaller portions of our revenue stream as we get into licenses and the criminal justice tax and fines and penalties. Next one I want to bring though to your attention is charges for services in our parks. This year, this was an area that was hit very hard. We shut down almost all the summer recreation programs. We shut down the pool, that's, you know, the, the gazebo rentals and things like that. Next year, as we get through the winter and see how things come back, we're being a little conservative here and only assuming about a three quarters recovery. Would be delighted if we can come back stronger. I know people are anxious to get outside and and take advantage of the amenities we have in our parks and at our pool, but we just want to kind of be mindful of the fact that folks may also be a little skittish about some of those group gatherings and things like that as we go into the spring. So we've, we've kept that one a little low. The other one I'll note is significant, we've made a significant reduction. That's the miscellaneous and other revenue. That one along with, or excuse me, that one, we anticipated, you know, just wanting to be conservative there until we go get to see how, how some of those smaller pieces all come in. Bottom line, new general fund revenue next year will be, we're projecting right now would be a little over a hundred and eleven thousand less than the general fund revenue that we were projecting for this year. So a little less than a one percent dip. This is, as I said, a fairly conservative number that we're going to go into with the budgeting process. If revenues come in stronger, then we can certainly take a look at that in first or second quarter budget amendments. But for planning purposes, we felt that this would reflect kind of the uncertain times that we're still in, but you know, also reflects some of the optimism that we're starting to see. With that, I'll go down, we'll scroll down into our other funds. I'll start with, and again, most of these are pretty straightforward. Not much change projected, pretty flat, but I'll highlight the ones that do change. Street funds, the two street funds there, you'll see we have about a five percent reduction. As I mentioned earlier, we are currently running about seventeen percent below the original budgeted projection in gas tax revenue. Gas tax revenues provide almost just over a third of the overall revenue for the street fund. And the rest of the street fund is made up from a transfer in from the general fund. We're assuming it may take a little while for transportation to get back on track or that if even with the disruptions we've seen this year and and the fact that our economy is so dependent on transportation in terms of getting goods to market and and so forth, the fact that we still suffered a fifteen percent reduction. We're kind of edging on the conservative side here again and keeping it at about a five percent overall, which would be about a fifteen percent reduction in gas tax next year. We're also waiting to watch what happens in the legislative process and whether some of those cost out, you know, revenue sharing formulas get tinkered with. We just, we kind of want to be careful here and and foresee a little bit of a reduction there. Next, we're, I'll go down to one sixty, the tourism expansion fund. This is the lodging taxes. Again, just kind of not wanting to be pessimistic, but realistic about how fast folks are going to get comfortable again with travel and tourism. Certainly hope for a better year than, than what we had this year, but we are kind of budgeting that at about only seventy percent of what we would see in a normal year. Let's see, community development block grant, I think that's basically just rounding it up to five thousand. We've heard conversations that the county is applying for some COVID CDBG funds. They made one attempt at it, their initial application, I understand, was rejected as not a, not a, not a, an activity that, that was going to get funded. So we're kind of leaving that as a placeholder for potential in the future. Next, I'll call your attention to Fund Three Twenty Two, which is the fire equipment reserve fund. This is actually taking a step towards council's goal to start funding our various ERNR funds. And this one is for the fire department. And Chief Anderson and I had a conversation around this when we made the decision to recommend the purchase of that fire engine to you. One of the things we also wanted to be able to look at and and propose committing to in the future is that, you know, as we bring new pieces of equipment into the fleet, that part of that analysis is not just the acquisition of it, but the planning for its replacement. And so that large percentage increase there is essentially due to a planning assumption that we're making, that we'll be recommending to council that we go ahead and earmark fifty thousand dollars out of the ambulance EMS fund to shift it into this fire equipment reserve fund and start the plan for the future replacement of the engine that we're acquiring this year. With that, I'll ask Jackie to scroll down just a bit further. Thank you. There's, you'll see a minor adjustment in the ambulance EMS fund. That's because we are starting, we are continuing to see strong revenues from the G E M T program that Chief Anderson got us signed up with, I think, a year and a half, two years ago now. And then, you know, that adjustment of the fifty thousand out of that fund into four two two. And lastly, I'll talk a little bit about that equipment rental and replacement fund at the bottom, five oh one, same kind of thing. We're hoping to begin earmarking more funding into that. Be able to, you know, hopefully do that. With all of that, next year's total budgeted revenues are basically going to be a mirror of this year's. The original plan was for about twenty-six point eight million and will come in at about twenty-six point seven million in revenue. And keeping in mind, this is just the revenue that will come in in 2021. We'll go into 2021 with a beginning fund balance that is based off of how much cash we are able to conserve and 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 reserve this year by keeping a tight control of spending in 2020. So we'll have, you know, that we have the goal this year of an ending fund, general fund ending reserve of seven hundred and fifty thousand. We're planning in our budget assumptions to still try to meet council's target that next year's general fund ending reserve be a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase or a million dollars. We are going to, you know, we're trying to set the stage for meeting all of those objectives, even with the flat revenues. We've got a lot of work to do vegetarily in the next couple of months to try to get all of that to happen. But right now, our revenue forecast, it's not, it's not the three to five percent growth we'd love to see, but it's, it's pretty stable, all thing, especially considering the environment we're in. So very pleased about that and be happy to answer any questions.
I will now call on each council member to ask questions or make comments. Councilor Rissushi.
No comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Henry.
No questions at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Burisma.
No questions at this time, thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Hicks.
No questions or comments at this time.
Councilor Farmer.
No questions.
Thank you. I also have no questions at this time. Any follow-up questions or comments anyone wishes to make on this item before we move on to the next. The hearing done. Upcoming council meetings, Mr. City Manager.
I apologize for monopolizing your time quite so much tonight. I hadn't intended this to be entirely my show, but I also certainly understand life happens and, and, you know, we certainly wish Director Alba a speedy recovery and look forward to welcoming her back soon. So looking ahead, it is still mostly budget ahead of us. On October twelfth, Elizabeth has been working a little bit remotely with our finance supervisor, Delilah Sines, to prepare for you budget amendment number four. This is kind of the general third quarter cleanup. We will have our public hearing on ad valorem taxes. This is the one percent property tax increase that councils are authorized to enact. I will let you know part of what will be in the packet around that, on that topic, is that this year, the implicit price deflator, which is the data point that the state uses to fix what the amount or what the maximum, you know, amount of the ad valorem tax increase can be, or up to that one percent cap. This year, it actually came in a little below one percent at point six and some change, about six tenths of a percent. Most cities, when presented with that opportunity, have two options, or cities have two options when presented with that fact. You can adopt at the property tax increase at the rate of the implicit price deflator, about six tenths of a percent, or you can declare a, a state of need and choose to go ahead and implement all the way up to the one percent. Now, to put that in context, four tenths of a percent in our property taxes is less than three thousand dollars difference. So it, it, it's, it's a pretty small amount in the overall scheme of the budget, but we will be presenting those options and we'll have that public hearing for you on October twelfth. In addition, working with the Washington State Department of Revenue and the Transportation Improvement Board and with our contracted engineers at HLA, Public Works Director Fisher has been working to queue up the fuel tax agreement for the Midvale Road project. This is the project that will resurface the entire length of Midvale from the, the southern edge of the highway interchange all the way down to Duffy Road. The state is anxious to kind of see this move forward for us to at least be able to complete surveying work in 2020 so that other steps can begin more quickly in 2021. So through all of their efforts, they're hoping to get council's approval to move forward with this at the October twelfth meeting. The funding that the city is obligated to provide with this commitment is funding that will be generated under the sales and use tax increase that was just approved by voters in the council for the transportation benefit district. And Director Fisher will be able to provide more detailed briefing to you on, on the project and on, on that funding next week. And then lastly, Planning Supervisor Mike Shuttleworth, we have received back the comments from the city attorney on some minor adjustments and clarifications to the accessory dwelling unit ordinances. We'll be bringing those forward to council for consideration. Our last meeting of October is then potential adoption of the ad valorem rate increase. And then we're also working on potential agreement with MRSC for access to their small works roster. We, like most cities, we're required to maintain a small works roster for certain capital projects. It's, it comes with obligations to administer, to keep current, to update, to It's, it comes with obligations to administer, uh, to keep current, to update, to advertise and solicit vendors to be on that roster. Uh, many cities find those administrative requirements to be, uh, kind of a burden, given all of the other things that they're required to do. So MRSC a number of years ago essentially got into, uh, the field of providing a roster. Because they are providing a roster to so many different jurisdictions, uh, they have a far larger roster and a more robust pool of competitive, uh, vendors, uh, with representation around the state. Uh, so there's many local vendors available, but also, uh, others that, uh, can be available. So it can be advantageous for a city to, to go with that and we're looking into that and hope to bring that to you in October. Um, I think with that, I'll, I'll kind of conclude, that's the, the heart of what's coming up in, in, in this month. Um, and happy to answer any other questions about schedule.
Thank you, Mr. City Managers. Any council member have any, any questions for the City Manager?
I have one, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you.
So I don't know. Okay, thank you. So I don't know why, but I was reading today's, uh, public notices in the Herald Republic and I happened to notice that the, uh, Town of Nat Cheese had listed in their, their public hearing for the ad valorem tax to be held also next week, Monday, but they were mentioning that that public hearing would be held in council chambers at the city hall. Um, do we have any guidance at this point for when we can start getting together and meeting in person?
If they are doing that, my understanding is that they are in violation of the governor's directives and the health district's directives. Um, I am hearing of jurisdictions attempting to kind of push the boundary on that. Um, we did last week, uh, took part in the weekly Yakima Valley Conference of Governments, uh, coordinated call for strategies on reopening Yakima County. Uh, this is with, uh, elected officials and the appointed, uh, administrators, um, as well as representation from the health district, from the governor's office, from other state agencies. And during the roundtable portion of that, I did raise the question of how is it that with the negotiated refinements and adjustments that are enabling more and more businesses, uh, houses of worship, uh, now even schools to begin entering kind of a phased, uh, level of in-person activity? Um, when will the governors and can the gov, not just when, but will the governor's office and the departments of health take a look at the steps that can be initiated to enable our local governing bodies to resume in-person meetings, uh, in some form at least? And, uh, the representative from the governor's office who was on the call, uh, took note of that, uh, actually followed up with me by email afterward to make sure he'd understood the request and, and what we're trying to achieve, uh, correctly. Um, followed back up with him and, and confirmed, uh, that information and I copied Chris Wickenhagen, who's the chair, or excuse me, the director of YVCOG, so she saw that communication as well. And we are, uh, hopeful that that will result in, uh, some consideration of this. In the meantime, we, I do note that, uh, at the end of, uh, September or at the beginning of October, uh, the Republican and Democratic leadership of the, uh, state legislature did unanimously, uh, they don't vote, but they, they act by letter to extend the current prohibitions, uh, and restrictions and suspensions of the Open Public Meetings Act, uh, through November 9th. Um, and so along with many other gubernatorial orders and proclamations. So, uh, we are, uh, trying to press the point and, um, we'll, I'll be keeping council advised as, as, uh, we get any, um, opportunity to continue, uh, either continue the dialogue or get an answer back.
Thank you, sir.
Any, any other questions by council? Hearing done. There being no further business coming before council and without objection, I adjourn this meeting at 7:45 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Nice job, Ron.
Thank you for tolerating me.
You're fine.
You did well.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Night.